Alrighty, it is six seventeen. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting of the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. A quorum of board members is present. I will note that our board trustee Janet Lee is not with us tonight. We will miss her. This meeting has been duly called and a notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer or meditation. Thank you all. Please remain standing as our communications team introduces our students from Purtle Elementary here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and honors to the Texas flag.
Yes ma'am, thank you Madam President. Tonight with us, we have the Purtle Panthers Mason Bailey and Brooklyn Jennings, both fifth graders. Mason's favorite subject in school is math, and he is involved in several clubs, including the Purtle Running Club and Purtle Rock Stars. He describes himself as outgoing and adventurous, and in his free time, Mason enjoys playing soccer and doing puzzles. And we also talked a little bit about possibly cross-country in his future, because he has stamina in his running, we discussed. And Ms. Brooklyn, she's also a fifth grader. Her favorite subject in school is reading, because she believes books have the ability to take you places that you've never been before. She also loves reading about the adventures of characters in the books. In her free time, Brooklyn enjoys playing with her siblings and her cousins. She is the oldest among all of them, she shared. She is also an active runner and is part of the Purtle Running Club. So we're first going to invite Mason to lead us in the US pledge, and then Brooklyn will follow him with the Texas pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
That was excellent. Thank you all so much. We always like to get our little party started with some recognitions, and we've got some really great recognitions this evening. And Ms. Cox, if you'll get us started.
Yes ma'am, thank you Madam President. What we enjoyed during our student showcase in our break tonight was the North Belton Middle School Theater performance. They were back there in the back with us. We were honored to have the cast of Charlotte Swab performing a scene from their upcoming production. The show opens May fourteenth at six PM in the school's cafeteria, with a second performance on May fifteenth at two PM. In lieu of buying tickets, audience members can make a donation to the theater program. Students participating in tonight's performance include Giselle Lemus, Tyler Gray, Lauren Denker, Gabriel Dalton, Kimberly Duberry, Avery Rayburn, Jalen Mace, Leah Aguilar, Mila Knight, and Ava Spiker. The production is directed by theater teacher Connie Gilseth, and we just want to thank them again for coming and entertaining us this evening. Congratulations. First up for recognitions, ADTS National Champions. The Belton High School Magic Bells have once again claimed national champion titles at the American Dance Drill Team Nationals Competition held at the University of North Texas late last month. Competing alongside forty-nine teams, the Magic Bells took the top spot in the Contemporary Category with their performance of Colorbind, and earned the first and second place titles in duets with the partner performances of Genevieve Zwazik and Leah Reyes, and also Ella Ling and Reagan Martin. In addition, there are over ten other awards that the Belton Magic Bells claimed. I'll let you read it in the board memo. But tonight with us to accept this team recognition is Captain Genevieve Zwazik, and Officers Madeline Bradshaw, Rachel Schiller, and Maggie Hodnik. Their coaches are Rachel Hill and Emma Soward. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Also at this same competition, some of the district's younger dancers had a successful season. Earlier this year, members of the Purtle Dance Team collected socks and underwear to donate to our district's Project Heartbeat program. They entered the service project with the American Dance and Drill Team, and in March, they were announced as the winners of Grand Champion Giving Back Award. The award comes with a $250 donation to further support Project Heartbeat. The Purtle Dance Team is an after-school club with over eighty students participating. The group is taught by teachers Jennifer Anderman, Elizabeth Vandy, Amy Martenson, and Heather Whitley, along with former Magic Bell and current UMHB student and Seder Bell Berkeley Martenson. Congratulations and thank you. I expect we'll see some of these students back in the later years. Good to get them in here at elementary level. Another big exciting recognition tonight. Belton ISD was represented at the Texas High School Women's Powerlifting Association State Championship by six high school student athletes last month. From Lake Belton High School, sophomores Pedroan Ayers and Haley Thomas qualified for the state competition in their first year ever competing in the sport. Thomas finished in twelfth place in the state in her weight classification, Ayers finished in seventh in her weight classification, and posted a personal best in the bench press and deadlift. From Belton High School, we had four lady tiger powerlifters qualifying and compete at the state championship. Freshmen J.C. Myers, Junior Maya Jones, Senior Bryce Allen Borland, and Senior Bethany Sherwood. All four ladies finished the competition within the top ten of their weight classes, three finishing with their personal best weight totals. And Bethany Sherwood finished the competition by bringing home a state medal, earning fourth place in the one hundred ninety-eight pound weight class with a total of nine hundred pounds. Oh my goodness. Coaches for these outstanding Belton ISD athletes are Greg Rudolph, Barry Campbell, and Crystal Year again. Congratulations to these amazing student athletes. I'm expecting we'll see them back, since several of them are freshmen and juniors. Next up, we have our UIL Theatrical Design State Qualifiers. Two varsity theater students are advancing to the state UIL Theatrical Design Competition. Juniors Felicity Anderson and Madeline Clark, who both attend Belton New Tech, were among students from across the state who submitted designs based on the musical Man of La Mancha. Anderson's marketing designs and Clark's hair and makeup will now be resubmitted for the state meet in May. Belton High School's Technical Director of Theater is Marie Phillips. Congratulations to these students and their technical director. Our Belton Rotary Educator of the Quarter is Ms. Sarah Harden-Trimble. She's being recognized for her outstanding service to Belton ISD. Sarah serves as a fourth grade teacher at Sparta Elementary. She is in her nineteenth year in education and her fifth with Belton ISD. Mrs. Harden sets high expectations for herself and for her students, and finds every way for students to meet those expectations. This year, Mrs. Harden met the challenge of virtual learning for her fourth grade self-contained class. She made the online learning fun and engaging, and students succeeded because of her efforts. She then moved to be a hybrid teacher, where some students are face-to-face and some are virtual. Again, Mrs. Harden created the best learning environment for all students. Her students are making progress and growing as learners because of her efforts. The relationships she has built hold fast in both environments. Julie Manley, principal at Sparta, stated, "Mrs. Harden is an incredible educator who values relationships with students and families above all else. I would highly recommend her for an outstanding, as an outstanding representative for Educator of the Month." Congratulations. And thank you for what you're doing, Mrs. Harden. Now our Temple Rotary Educator of the Month. Mary Cruz Vaudey is being recognized as the Temple Rotary Club for her outstanding service to Belton ISD. Mary Cruz serves as a pre-K teacher at Belton Early Childhood School, possibly one of our favorite places to be, on the communications team. She's in her twenty-second year in Belton ISD. Mrs. Vaudey is dedicated to connecting with kids every day. Her positivity is contagious among staff and students. She provides each and every student with structured, engaging activities, and allows their voices to be heard. She teaches students to observe and share their learning with others in the classroom. This rich learning environment which she has created has resulted in students feeling valued, confident, and eager to communicate. Courtney Brewer, Assistant Principal at Beck, stated, "One of my favorite things to see in her class is the use of the table captains and leaders. Even at four years old, these students exhibit leadership qualities. Mrs. Vaudey has created a sense of community and unity within her classroom." Thank you for all that you do, Mrs. Vaudey. And finally, tonight we bring before you the Tasbo Award of Excellence in Financial Management. Belton ISD is one of only ten school districts across the state to be awarded the inaugural Award of Excellence in Financial Management by the Texas Association of School Business Officials. This new program recognizes Texas schools districts that have implemented professional standards, best practices, and innovations in financial reporting. While we want to thank all of our business services staff for what they do each and every day, for all of our students and staff involved in making this happen, and with us tonight, we have Carrie Pridemore, Ebony Ortiz, Trece Miller, and Mrs. Jennifer Land, our CFO. Congratulations and thank you.
Always a lot of fun. It's just pleasing to my soul to recognize good people, good students, good work. Amazing. Alrighty then. So the next item on our agenda are public comments. We have a number of folks signed up, so I will just be as clear as I can be. When you all are, when I call your name, if you'll come up to the podium here, state your name and your address for record. In accordance with District Policy, BED Local, any person wishing to address the board in public comments must submit a public comments form. I already have that up here. The board has elected to permit comments on any subject but ask that comments pertain to public education issues. In order to comply with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board may not respond to comments or otherwise discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on the meeting agenda. That simply just says that while we're happy to hear what you have to say, we're not able to engage in a back-and-forth discussion with you, but we're certainly here to hear, happy to hear whatever you would like to discuss with us. Each participant shall be limited to five minutes. Our board designee today will be our Vice President. Please, one more time, Vice President Jeff Norwood. He will keep the time during your remarks, and will provide a notice when one minute remains, and again, at the conclusion of your five minutes. If comments address a matter on the meeting agenda, the board will defer discussion on the issue until the agenda item is reached during the meeting. The board will consider complaints to remain unresolved after they have been addressed through proper and administrative channels when they've been placed on the agenda. As I stated before, I'm going to go ahead and just call you by your name. Forgive me if I get your last name wrong, but if you will clearly come up to this podium here, Ms. Andrea Gaither, and just state your name and your address for the record, and when you start speaking, Mr. Norwood will start the timer.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Gaither. My address is two five one five Ink of Dove Drive here in Temple, Texas. I know you're all thrilled to see me here again tonight. Rest assured, I'm not here to make you answer to me. I'm quite sure at this point, God is already aware of your complicit crimes against our children. January sixth, my child's fifth grade English teacher thought it was a fun idea to throw the language arts curriculum out the window. Our children watched CNN that day. They saw cars being blown up and missile strikes. You can imagine, if this material had been in a movie, she would have needed a signed permission slip from us parents. Aside from the violence she showed these ten and eleven-year-olds this day, she told the class everyone needed a COVID vaccine, not FDA-approved, not approved for children, and she's not a health or science teacher. Why is a teacher giving medical advice to our children? After school that day, my son came home afraid. A vaccine that was given to my husband, a doctor at Fort Hood, stole the health of his dad. My son has seen codes called on his dad. He once had a healthy, active dad that coached him playing soccer, and now has a dad that thankfully can just barely walk again. My husband is immune compromised and receives IVIG monthly. When I asked this teacher that evening why she thought it was her place to show the bombings, airstrikes, or give medical advice to children that day, she told me I was just mad because it was CNN. This is someone that has never met me. She doesn't know me, my political beliefs, my religious beliefs, or how I parent my children. She had no idea that for the last four years, I was one of those pink-wearing, anti-Trump marching women. I didn't care for him, didn't respect him or the way he talked about women. You see, this teacher is rogue, she's dangerous, she's promoted so much, "Wear a mask if you care about others, wear a mask so you don't kill grandma and grandpa," that other students have harassed my children. "You must be a racist Trump supporter," one fifth grader said to all three of my kids at the end of one day, "because my kids went to school wearing a face shield and not a mask." Is that acceptable, that our kids are being harassed and called racist Trump supporters for parental decisions of whether they wear a face shield or a mask? There's too many politics in the classroom, dare I say, too many leander politics. Too much of the teacher's personal opinion is being projected on the students. I'm disgusted my second grader and her best friend are segregated on opposite playgrounds at Charter Oak. I'm disgusted that y'all think you have any right making medical decisions for our children. There's a hundred other districts in Texas now that have allowed parental choice. I urge you again to do the same. You are not God, you are not my children's parents, you are not my child's doctor, which you've also ignored. You're too busy being political, you're contributing to mental health problems in children. The suicide rate is sixty-seven percent in children. It's up sixty-seven percent in the last year. You've created an environment full of abuse. You've kept parents out of classrooms, you've kept us from having relationships with teachers. You've promoted a toxic and abusive environment at BISD. You've overset boundaries. It's time for a reality check. No masks at soccer for my kids, gymnastics, or during worship. We've gone to the rodeo, the zoo, and the caverns, we're not wearing masks. I've already told you my husband's immune compromising gets IVIG every month. We still aren't living in fear. I don't mean to trample on anyone else's beliefs. If you feel more comfortable wearing a mask for you and your children, that is fine. However, that is not what I want for my children. No masks at school, free our children from the political placebo. You may not answer to me, but you will answer to God. Promote basic hand hygiene. It's time to ditch the mask.
One minute.
Ninety-nine percent recovery rate. It's not a pandemic, especially in our children. Thank you.
Shanna Degenhart? Shanna Degenhart? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Shanna Degenhart, six seven one five Naples Drive, Temple, Texas. Good evening. My name is Shanna Degenhart. While my children are not zoned for BISD, I have two very special nieces that are. I stand before you today, speaking on half of the voiceless in this district, and the children, and the teachers. The children have been forced to wear an ineffective medical device for viruses all year in order to get a quality education. They have been told over and over to keep their mask on for everyone to stay safe from sickness and dying. We have instilled a fear in them that is beyond horrifying. This fear we have created carries over to their daily lives as well. I witness it frequently when I shop around town mask-free, and a masked child cowers to their parent in fear when they see me maskless. When parents complain to schools about the forced masking and the problems it's creating for their child, they are told they can do virtual learning if they don't want to comply. Give me a break. We all know that is not an adequate education. Teachers even admit that. What are we doing to our children, and when is someone going to stand up for them? Unfortunately, we know it's not going to be the teachers and admin at each school. They are fearful of losing their jobs. I called on several friends that are teachers and a principal from this district to stand up, speak, or even just show up today. All of their responses were the same. I agree with you one hundred percent. This is terrible, what we're doing to our children, but due to conflict of interest and fear of losing my job, I have to remain silent. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but only attending the meeting to show support. But when my teacher friend at church approached me yesterday, begged me to stand up, she said, "Hold the line and fight for the voiceless," I knew what had to be done. Today, I call on you, Mr. Smith, on you, Mrs. McDonald, and you, Mr. Norwood, you also, Mr. Taggart, you, Mr. Flohr, you, Mr. Alcozer, and you, my friend, Mrs. Bass, to stand up for our children. If not you, who is going to do it?
Rebecca Isdale? Please state your name and address for the record.
Rebecca Isdale, it's five six nine Messer Ranch Road in Belton. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be here speaking with you tonight. My name's Rebecca Isdale again. I have four children. Two of our daughters currently attend South Belton Middle School. Our little ones, pre-K and kindergarten-aged, aren't attending Belton Elementary School we're zoned for because of the mask mandate. They have been attending a private school where masks have never been required for the kids, and there's no major outbreaks. We've been attending our church in Belton without masks since September with hundreds of people. Our kids have been going into childcare and youth group with many kids all mask-free. There's been no outbreak. We were at a Clay Walker concert Friday night in Salado with a thousand other people, maybe even some of you, ninety-nine percent with no masks. We have a lot of friends and neighbors, many of whom are in the healthcare field, and we all hang out together in large groups, fellowshipping with one another and letting our kids play. No one's wearing masks, and there's no super-spreader stuff going on. We were just at Extreme Trampoline Park in Temple on Saturday for a birthday party. The place was packed, only about five percent were wearing masks. We went to spare time a week and a half ago, and it's never been, I've never seen it more crowded, and again, there were virtually no masks. I would imagine that many of you, when you're not serving in this role, are just like us and not wearing masks. So why the farce? A lot of people don't want to wear masks. It's a front when they wear them to school. They're not, they're not wearing masks other places, they're not getting sick, and you continue to infringe on their freedoms. This is putting our children's psychological well-being, health, and education at risk. Masks, just as vaccinations, should remain a personal choice, and I would hope you would agree that institutions such as government, TEA, and respectfully, this very board, should not be allowed to make medical decisions for our children. We're not asking you all to say no masks. We're asking that you allow for people to choose. If some people are too afraid to come to school without a mask mandate, let them stay home. Teachers who have to come to school can wear masks and exercise social distancing if they choose. I plead with you to stand up for the children in the district, including those who have been failed this year due to these policies. It is time that we make masks optional for our children and staff, and allow them to return to normal. Like the flu, COVID is not going away. We risk something greater by not ending this now. The mask mandate is not helping COVID from spreading. I encourage you to look at the facts and not be led by emotion and mask-shaming. Look at the school districts that lifted the mask mandate back on March tenth, when our governor did. Look at their COVID cases, and you'll find there has not been an explosion of COVID. You are our elected officials, please honor our rights as parents. I will fight for our public schools. It defines our community and embodies our values. We will fight to hold this board to its intended position. Please adjust this policy, we beg you. God bless and thank you.
Brandon Hall? Brandon Hall, yes.
It's hard for me to hear, especially with the masks make it very difficult, so, thank you. My name, Brandon Hall, and I live at three two zero five B River Place Drive. I have two I have two children that attend New Tech High School. One proudly supports and participates on the J V Bells team and that win numerous awards and she loves participating and representing the school. And I also have a son who's in ninth grade, actually she's about to graduate as a senior, so we're very proud of her. She's going to Texas Tech, so thank you for giving her the education that allows her to be able to succeed at the next level. We also have a son who's in ninth grade at New Tech and he also participates on the basketball team and he loves it and he enjoys representing the school. Both are incredible students and my wife and I are very proud of them. So with that, I'd like to make my comments, please. I'm here in support of removing the masks off of these children. Both of my children asked me to come here and speak for them because they feel that they do not have a voice in this. They do not want to wear their masks, they do not feel that it is required or necessary. But aside from the feelings, we know, after a year of dealing with this, we now have data that we can step back and review. We can look at what the scientists are telling us. And we have to know that amongst all of the, everything that's being told and all the different propaganda that's being thrown on both sides, if we actually step back and look at the data, we can see some, some things that, that make sense. You know, telling the truth in a world of lies is a revolutionary act and that's what I'm here to do. Looking at the CDC's website itself and their own studies, it says that disposable medical masks have, there is limited evidence that they're effective. And their systematic review found that no significant effect of face masks or transmission of lab, that they, that they, that they protect at all. That's just one study right there. We have another study that says that when we wear masks, this is another CDC study, that says that the blood CO2 levels increase after one hour of wearing these masks and it creates significant physiological effects on the wearer. Stuff like headaches, increased pressure inside the skull, nervous system changes, increased breathing frequency, increased work of breathing and requiring to breathe. Many times when we have to wear, we want to move them from our faces because our bodies are not getting enough oxygen. To fix the problem, what these doctors are saying is simply remove the mask. That's their, that's what they say as, as to fix the problems with the masks that do not work is to remove them. We're seeing that they cause headaches, rashes, acne, skin breakdown, impaired cognition. One that I pulled from Stanford recently, which is a vast right-wing conspiracy, you know, university, this is Stanford. They're, they're saying that the impact that is occurring while wearing these, the effectiveness of face masks are ineffective to blocking the particles because the particles are so much smaller than the face mask. They say that the evidence challenges the efficacy of face masks. Compared to no masks, there were no effective, they were no, no more effective against transmission of viral infections or influenza. These things do not work. We may think that they work, we may feel safer with them, but they do not work and what are the long-term effects? We don't know. We know that they cause problems like headaches, we know that, and these are all physiological issues that we see, but what about the psychological issues? What about the psychological impacts to young children, to teenagers in these awkward years when they're trying to fit in and get along and it's so difficult to look at someone else with half of their face covered? They have a hard enough time identifying who they are as teenagers, as, as children. And now we have to add this to it. We know that any individual that's nineteen or younger has a ninety-nine point nine nine seven percent of surviving this. We probably have a probability of getting, a higher probability of getting hit by a car crossing a street. We know that those from twenty to forty-nine have a ninety-nine point nine eight percent chance of survival and those sixty-nine and under a ninety-nine point five percent chance. We know the numbers now and I'm asking you as our representatives, as our leaders, as the ones that can help these children, make the decision to remove the masks. Please do not follow the fear, but lead by example and boldness. That's what I ask.
Margie Pyle. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Margie Pyle and I live at two nine oh five South Highway thirty-five, Belton, Texas, seven six five thirteen. I am here today for all of the children, but I'm definitely here for the children that has had assault in their life and they are being made to wear these masks in your school buildings. I don't know if any of that has ever happened to you, but I am a survivor of rape and I will not be wearing a mask, my mouth will not be covered. My mouth will not be, not exposed to be able to shout to the world that I am a survivor. We, we have to stand up for our children. Did you know according to rain.org, one in nine girls are sexually assaulted and one in fifty boys are? We have hundreds of kids in our buildings and our schools that we are protecting and we're doing a great job. But it doesn't matter, these kids are walking home. These kids are riding the bus and walking home. There is assaults that do happen, happen in school buildings and they are having to cover a mask. Not only that, when you wear a mask and cover your face, the anxiety that comes with that. We are a school, we are learning, these kids are not learning when all they have is the drift of, "My mouth is covered, I cannot breathe, I cannot breathe." It takes you back to that moment when you had no control over your body. You had no control over your body and once again, in these school systems, they have no control over their bodies? They have to wear this mask or they can't go to school. Sure, they can do learning on a computer at home, isolated from other children. That is not the answer. There is healing that comes from survivors and they need friends, they need teachers, they need counselors, they need coaches, they need principals, they need each one of you to say, "I support you and I am not going to harm you any more than you already are." Please, I am begging you, do not force these kids to wear masks inside your school when they are affected anyway. They are already living in fear. What if they come back? What if they hurt my family member? I have to go to court next month. I'm still in counseling. I'm still in counseling three years later and I'm still having to wear a mask at school. It might not seem like a big deal to you, but it is a big deal. And I promise you, they are not focusing on learning. Their social skills are not being taught and growing when all of, when they are just covered up. I'm asking you, please be there for the kids and unmask our kids, at least give a choice. I'm not saying that every child or every teacher shouldn't wear a mask, it should be a personal choice. Us parents should be able to choose for our children if that is what they should wear or not. It doesn't do anything and it needs to stop now. Thank you.
Christina Wilson. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Christina Wilson, I'm an independent journalist with Naked Wire Network. Members of the board, excuse me, I live in Belton, fifty-one oh five Fenton Lane. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board and our superintendent, Matt Smith. This evening I would like to spend my time speaking about the Belton School Board and Belton School District's decision to remove parental choice in regard to their child's health and well-being. Specifically by forcing them to wear a face mask when they attend face-to-face instruction on campus. I stand before you this evening, one year and one day after the infamous claim of fifteen days to slow the spread. The fact that I am here in an attempt to reclaim our children's God-given right to personal liberty is disheartening to say the least. To be clear, I will not continue to speak from an emotionally driven standpoint. Instead, I will be discussing research and facts, the very research and facts that you all are already acutely aware of but continue to ignore. The same facts that countless parents spent hours researching that were sent to your office for review and of which none was responded to or taken into consideration months ago when the mandates were lifted. I never thought there would ever be a need to stand in front of a school board discussing the very basic common sense knowledge. But let's discuss the physiology of breathing, as Brandon already did, thank you, Brandon. I'll even put in it medical terms for you. Breathing is one of the most important physiological functions to sustain life and health. The human body requires a continuous and adequate oxygen supply to all organs and cells for normal function and survival. Breathing is also an essential process for removing metabolic byproducts like, you guessed it, carbon dioxide. It is well established that an acute significant deficit in oxygen with increased levels of carbon dioxide, even for a few minutes, can be severely harmful. This is where the common sense part comes in, my friends. Why is my five-year-old being forced to wear a face mask on his face while he is outside at recess? Why is my twelve-year-old forced to wear a face mask in P E while he is running? Does that seem like a good, healthy choice to you? Can the school board and school district guarantee that every student being forced to wear a face mask has not or will not experience any harmful side effects by wearing one? Can you, can you guarantee that? I will continue to the efficiency of face masks, again, this research is already well-established and each of you are already well-aware of it, but on a whim, on a whim, just in case one of you happens to honestly not know this information. Here is again, in medical terms. The data is clear, masks are ineffective to block viral particles, period. Clinical scientific evidence shows that the efficiency of face masks to block human-to-human transmission of any virus is ineffective. There are countless, countless controlled trials that show this very research. A simple Google search, my friends, in case you need a quick reminder. In layman's terms, and in case, case, I mean, let me just put this in layman's term, okay? This was America's frontline doctors, this came from her at the start of this pandemic, back last July. This came from a doctor, from the American frontline doctors, who was very outspoken about this issue from the very beginning. She said, and I quote, "If all anybody had to do to prevent the spread of a virus was to put a piece of cloth up to their face, do you not think that our ancestors would have taught us this centuries ago? And our grandmothers?" I'm fairly certain, she said, that I would have learned this information in medical school. This is a doctor, many doctors have said this. This is common sense, my friends, it's common sense. Why has this district refused to follow the other hundred and twelve school districts in Texas who lifted their restrictions while, while the mandates were lifted, when the mandates were lifted? Why, why? Their data clearly shows a decrease in COVID cases as a result. Fancy that? Oh, and that information, by the way, Mr. Superintendent, has already been provided to you multiple times.
One minute.
Now let me continue further and discuss the physiological effects of wearing face masks and again, you have already been provided this information. Physiologic, excuse me, psychologically, according to established research, wearing face masks has a fundamental negative effect on the wearer and the nearby person. Basic human-to-human connectivity through face expression is compromised and self-identity is eliminated. These sorts of dehumanizing movements delete the uniqueness and individuality of a person as well as the connected person. What do you think this has done to my, the development of my five-year-old? I would share that testimony with you, but I vow to keep emotion out of this. Please ask yourself if you have truly taken into consideration all aspects of this issue. Have you? You are all parents, how would you have responded to this twenty years ago when all we had access to was dial-up internet? Would you have been so easily manipulated? No. Where did our critical thinking skills go? My God.
That's the time.
Limiting human-to-human contact, especially in a very young age of a child, is nothing but detrimental to their growth and development, period.
Thank you for your comments.
And I won't even get into all the statistics about.
Thank you for your comments, that is your time, thank you.
I had way more to say, sorry.
Eric Domonowski. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name's Eric Domonowski, I live at three twenty-eight Irish Lane in Colleen. You know, I sit here and I listen to this group of parents and I'm sitting here wondering if you guys are tired of hearing us yet. I want to assure you that there is more than the twenty individuals that, of us sitting here and I am here speaking for thousands, probably thousands and thousands of parents within your district, Colleen, Copper's Cove, who all feel the same way. You've heard these stories. I don't have a script this evening, I've done that already. I spent the past year with scripts, sending emails, talking to vice principals, principals, superintendents, phone calls, Zoom meetings, at board meetings. I want to be here and I want to look each one of you in the eye and I want you to look at me because I'm not asking anymore, I'm tired of asking, I've been asking for the past year for choice and to allow me the right to look out for my son's health. I don't need you, I don't need the school board, I don't need the school district to dictate or force a mask on my child. I know what's best for him, I've been raising him for fourteen years, not you, okay? What we're doing here is absurd. If we just sit here and have common sense and take the politics out of this, you will see that wearing a mask on our, our children, wearing a mask eight hours, day after day after week after month, is illogical, it makes no sense, it's not preventing disease, it's not keeping them alive, okay? My family has not worn a mask since the beginning. We were out about a month ago at a place in Lampassus and I'm not even going to say their name because I'm afraid they'll catch backlash, but there was hundreds of children there, having fun, celebrating, hugging each other, high-fiving, guess what? None of us died, we're fine. I want to know how you guys are supposed to follow the T E, T E A code and there's a specific code in there that prohibits you or teachers or anybody in the school district to place a mask on a child during aversive techniques. Not even, you can't even do it for a minute, five minutes during aversive techniques or discipline. If that is wrong and that is against T E A code to place a mask on a child for two minutes, then how do you justify that it's perfectly acceptable to force a mask on my child for eight hours, every day for the entire school year? And let me tell you this. You know what you say to me? You say, "Well, we'll, we'll give you an alternative, you can do distant learning." Distant learning is a joke, okay? Let me tell you what my son does. He gets up in the morning about an hour, maybe two hours at the most, he's done. He's done with school for the day. He doesn't talk to friends, he doesn't talk to teachers, he doesn't participate in any kind of activities, he's done. He wakes up the next day, does it for hours. You think he's learning anything? You think that's comparable to face-to-face learning? It's not. So I want you guys to get off the politics, look at these parents and listen to what I'm saying because I speak for thousands, this ends now, okay? I'm done with it, I'm done being nice, I'm done begging, I'm done pleading, I'm demanding that you take us seriously and look at these children, listen to these parents and do the right thing. We're tired of it, thank you.
Brendan Kendrick. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brendan Kendrick, eighty-three sixteen Split Rock Cove in Temple. Good evening, Dr. Smith, members of the board. I'm here today to be a voice for my son and the many other parents that believe the mask policy should be a parent choice. policy should be a parent's choice. I'm an Army vet that spent 10 years protecting the freedoms and liberties we all value. I am raising my son to do the same and be proud of his country. I wanted to grow up with the same freedoms that we all had. As a community, we elected and put trust in y'all to help Belton ISD thrive. As of today, I feel myself and some parents are not being heard. If the parents aren't heard, then what's the point of the school board? If you're not reaching out to the public to ask and get them involved, there's no point. So, things need to change, or we're going to have people start replacing y'all. And I don't mind running. So, by not allowing the mask policy to be a parent's choice after the state mandate has lifted, it turns into a political issue. In a recent study, in a recent survey that y'all sent out, I guess it was about two months ago, to ask the community ways to improve y'all's schools, the overwhelming majority said to make masks a parent's choice. I'm not going to get into facts about masks, because I've sent emails and everybody else already talked about it, but I do believe that masks are a huge distraction and that parents should be the deciding factor when it deals with a child's health. By forcing masks, you are effectively taking my parental rights away, and the school board is taking over my child's health decisions. A little bit about my son. My son was segregated for four days because he has difficulty wearing a face mask all day. When he gets home, he always complains of headaches and being tired. The school then gave me an ultimatum to either wear a mask or do remote learning. Remote learning is not an option for myself or many parents. So in the end, I was forced to send my child back to school. And to finish it all up, the chances of a child getting or spreading COVID is minuscule. You need to balance your options and the action, no, you need to balance your options, and the action cannot be worse than the inaction. The social and emotional damage combined with the gaps in learning should be enough to realize that the mask policy needs to be changed. Thanks.
Dr. Larry Montgomery. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Dr. Larry Montgomery, 401 East Sixth Avenue here in Belton.
Thank you.
And my own Mr. Norwood.
Yep.
Got me going. Good deal. Well, happy April 19th. Today's my wife's birthday, my daughter-in-law's birthday, my nephew's wife's birthday. Apparently, Montgomery's the only married people on the 19th, and I remind my wife each year, it's the anniversary of the Oklahoma City bombing and the Branch Davidian assault. And so tonight, I will be sleeping on the couch again. But anyway, when I considered being in a bombing or doing what Ms. McDonald's done, which is raising five children, I'm still out on that, which I would choose. Everything I say tonight will be based on National Institute of Health or PubMed articles. So just keep that in mind. I've sat on hundreds of board meetings, and so I thought, what can I say that you will not hear? You've already heard a tremendous amount. Nothing that I've heard I disagree with on a scientific basis. But I thought I would just tell you how amazing you are, not only you, but every person in this auditorium. Chris, I know the New River, when it runs by Radford, is beautiful, but nothing so beautiful as what we have around us. Most of the people are talking about the pathogen, so I'm going to talk to you about the host. You have 86 billion brain cells. Now, you multiply that, sorry, left out one of you, but that's 602 billion brain cells that you have. There's 10,000 different types of neurons. As Ms. Lee, if she were here tonight, would grease, and she grew up with two boys and a husband, men have 5 million sweat glands, and they can spit enough in a year to fill up two bathtubs. It's pretty crazy, isn't it? Every second, you produce 25 million new cells in your body. And 99% of us in this room are genetically identical. And Mr. Norwood ever did night, I drop on my knees and I thank God for the 1% of me that's different than Miley Cyrus. So, as Mr. Alcozer will confirm from his past experience and expertise, if we were to culture your throat right now, 33% of you would have latent tuberculosis cells. Another 33% of your students would have strep. They're not sick, and you're not sick, okay? 1 billion bacteria can fit on the size of a pinhead, and viruses are 200 times smaller than a bacteria. And just look at your mask right now and contemplate that. You have four pounds of bacteria on your body, over 1,000 different types are on your skin right now, but that's nothing because you have 380 trillion viruses in and on your body as we speak, each of you. 1.7 million of those, we don't even know what they are, and on the planet, if you take 10 and put 31 zeros behind it, that's how many viruses are on the planet. So how is it possible?
One minute, Dr. Montgomery.
That you're still alive? Well, your body is doing exactly what it's supposed to do. You have an immune system. The nervous system and the immune system are inseparable, and your largest immune organ is your gut. So you need a neurologist, a chiropractor, and a gastroenterologist to help you understand I have much more that I could say. Ms. Bass could tell you about the psychology of fear much better than I. But in my 37-year career, where I treated over 400,000 patient visits, the pill I prescribed the most was something called a chill pill. You are not going to die. The statistics you've heard are correct. Your body will function if it's healthy, and I just encourage you to make a bold decision
That's time.
And side with health. Thank you.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is our action items. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding adoption of values and belief statements.
Madam President, members of the board, I believe we started this discussion back in December, and we are here tonight presenting to you those draft values and beliefs that we've brought to you a couple times now. Tonight, we are going to fly through a couple of slides, so next slide, please. I think we're having a little bit of trouble. There we go. There we go. There it...
Yep.
We'll hold on just one second. Rachel, give me a thumbs up when you all think we're good to go. We'll leave it right there. That's perfect. So, Goal One, key components of Goal One, there are three major things in there. In Goal One, we talked about setting direction and three key components. The first thing was developing a journey of a graduate. The second thing was adopting a vision and a mission, and a third thing was identifying values and beliefs as a school district. And so, we came to you in December and talked about beginning this process. We asked you for some feedback along the way, and we got some draft statements that we went over with you not too long ago. Tonight, we bring those statements to you for consideration for adoption. Next slide. So, those draft values and beliefs that you see here, there we go. Sounds like the echo's going, but those draft values and beliefs that you see here, we believe represent the feedback that you gave us as an administrative team. We hope that you see your words and your ideals in there, and the purpose of these, again, is to state what we, as a school district, value, and then a belief statement that accompanies that. And as we continue to grow, as you all know from the Templeton demographic report just a few months, or a few weeks ago, we are anticipated to grow by over 5,000 students by the time we hit the end of the decade. These values and beliefs help us preserve, according to you all as trustees, the things that make Belton ISD great. And so tonight, we bring these to you for your consideration. I do want to point out that the last one, we, as an administrative team, added because we felt it was extremely important to point out that instruction has a fundamental impact on kids, their excitement to learn, and their passion for learning, and we believe that that's an important part to put in those as well. So I present these to you tonight for discussion, any feedback that you might have in potential adoption.
Board, is there any discussion? Is there a motion to approve as presented? I saw Mr. Taggart, a second by Mr. Norwood. All in favor, please raise your hand. That passed as unanimously.
And as we close this one, I appreciate your support in all of that. You know that this roadmap map has been shared numerous times. Those values and beliefs are not only where we've been, but where we continue to go for the future. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda report, looks like we have an update by Temple College.
We have some friends from Temple College here tonight. In case you haven't heard, Temple College is a growing, thriving educational community in our area, and we're proud to have Brandon here and partner here tonight to give us a little bit of information regarding their upcoming bond election.
Welcome.
All right. Thank you all. We are very excited to be here tonight. My name is Brandon Bozon. I serve as the Vice President of Administrative Services and CFO for Temple College. With me tonight is Dr. Evelyn Waiaoli. She is our Vice President of Development and the Executive Director of the Temple College Foundation, so I'm very pleased to have her here. So, again, thank you so much for letting us be here. Can I start by asking, who here has either attended Temple College or had a child or friend or family member that attended Temple College? All right, cool. That's wonderful, and I'm a Temple College attendee myself, so we've got a great connection to the community. We find that every group we present to has got a handful or a roomful of folks that have been impacted by Temple College, and that's what our slogan for this bond process is, is the trusted for generations and building for the future. So a quick summary of the bond projects. We have an expansion and renovation of our Health Science Center that's going to add about 42,000 square feet and renovate about 12,000 square feet of our existing Health Science facility. The largest project in this bond is the Temple College Main Building, which is 122,000 square feet and will contain a university center, student enrollment services, a workforce training center, and then classrooms and other collaborative spaces as well, a visual arts center, which will be 23,000 square feet, and a campus service center of approximately 18,000 square feet. So that rounds out the total bond package of around $125 million, 124.9 million dollars. So the Temple College began its facilities master plan, or our facilities master plan, about a year and a half ago, and so a number of the buildings on our campus right now are 50 to 60 years old. So the college was established in 1926, and Berry Hall went up in 1956. That was our first building on our existing campus, and so that is shown there, as well as the ISC, which was built shortly thereafter. So as part of the facilities master plan, I kind of cut the tail end of your own facilities condition assessment. We had consultants and architects come in and do assessments on our existing structures, and a number of them are, you know, unfortunately past the point where rehabilitation or remodeling makes sense, and building new is the most cost-effective option. And so that's why so much new construction here in this bond package. Temple College has actually only pursued $33 million in general obligation debt over the last 50 years and is a board that's very familiar with building, school buildings. That is not a lot relative to the needs of our students and of our community, and so we've been very good stewards of taxpayer dollars in that regard. So I'm going to do a quick map view here before each project, so you can get an idea of where we're at. There at the bottom of the image is the HK Dodge and Loop, the future I-14 corridor there. They're bisecting the campus, kind of running north-south is First Street or Veterans Memorial there in Temple. And so there on the east side of campus, when you exit on and drive on from First Street, you'll see our existing Health Science Building off to the right, just besides the softball field. So that is what's shown there, and the addition to that building is in the darker orange. So this project is a need because our existing Health Science programs are outgrowing their spaces. We've got crowded nursing classrooms and small simulation areas that they're in the nursing building, and so we want to move that into an expanded Health Science Center. The key focus for Temple College and our workforce partners, especially in the medical field, is addressing the shortage of healthcare workers, and so that is a big part of what this project will do. The college is committed to doubling its nursing program over the five-year period. That doubling is currently underway, started in 2017 and hope to conclude our current plan in 2022, and then reengage in that same effort again over the next five years following that. We also have committed to growing our EMS programs as well as our sonography program, very popular medical programs at Temple College. And so that's our goal, to increase those. I don't know if anybody's had the pleasure of joining us at the Leopard Room before, but that is currently our community event space, our meeting space, where we like to host, you know, in normal times, folks to come on campus and have banquets or Rotary Club meetings or whatever else is available. But right now, that space is being used for overflow classrooms. So a lot of our Health Science programs, even in a COVID world, accreditation does not allow them to not have face-to-face labs and clinicals, and so we're utilizing that large Leopard Room to address our general lack of space and also provide greater social distancing. So our next project is the Temple College Main Building, and so that is right there on the southern edge of campus where the existing Berry Hall and ISC are. It will be our new front door to Temple College, and so that's a big push for us to increase that presence there, really to help students to know where to go. You know, with first-generation students, sometimes the biggest challenge is getting them out of the parking lot. You know, if you arrive on a college campus and your, you know, your family didn't attend college and you're already kind of on the fence about it, any sort of confusion or difficulty to just even find the right space can deter a student from pursuing their educational goals, and so that is a big part of what we want to solve with this, as well as giving our, expanding those workforce programs and offering new opportunities to our students and our community members. As I touched on earlier, there's three main components of this building, a workforce training center, so the college is dedicated to bringing in more industrial technology programs. technology programs, those hands-on technical programs that, you know, you can complete a certificate in as little as six months, all the way up through more sophisticated programs. The ISDs in this area, certainly Belton ISD and Temple ISD have both, you know, a little embarrassed to say, past us. Past us pretty good in these regards. Some awesome community, or some technical programs are being offered at the ISD level, and we want to build on that. Not compete with it, but partner with those and help students either finish that certification as they've, you know, kind of rolling out of high school, or even build on it if they're already receiving their certifications in high school. So, very excited to add that space to the campus and grow those programs. The next project is a university center. So, right now, the college has a great partnership with Central Texas A&amp;M and is aiming to grow that significantly. But what a university center allows is to, that additional classroom space, that university-level classroom space, where they can send their instructors and teach upper-level, even masters-level courses on the Temple College campus, so that a student can do all four years in Temple and receive a bachelor's degree or even a master's degree from partnering institutions. And so, we have partners, we, right now, we have transfer agreements, articulation agreements with, I believe, four of our major transfer partners. We want to continue to grow that and bring that presence, those transfer partners, actually onto our campus, so that our students can get those four-year degrees without leaving home. And the final piece there, I was talking about, is the student enrollment services piece. And so, that covers everything from admissions, financial aid, TSI testing, all of those things that a student needs to do in order to successfully enroll and begin their career and begin their higher education journey. And so, we want that also right there in that building, one stop, so that we can convert those prospective students to students and get them on their way to a degree or certificate. Also featured in this building will be collaborative spaces, classrooms, we, an IT help desk, all things that, you know, if a student doesn't know, or even if a faculty member or other staff member might not know where to go for a specific service, they'll know to start here at the Temple College Main Building and get those quick answers to whatever their questions may be. So, very excited about adding that space. As we touched on earlier, it will be the front entrance, the south entrance to the Temple College campus. There is ample parking in that area of campus, so it's easy to get to right off of the loop. And we'll also feature plenty of parking, and so we can have that community meeting room. I touched on the Leopard Room earlier. It's a nice room, but it's kind of in the far eastern, kind of tucked back into campus, hard for community members to find sometimes. And so, having it right here in our community and flexible space in our main building will make Temple College that much more accessible to our community and to our partners. The next project to touch on here, is jumping all the way to the north end of campus, is our Visual Arts Center. So, does anybody know what is in that space right now? I won't make you guess through. Go through the guessing game. But it's an empty lot, so that's a bit of a trick question. There is actually nothing right there. It's an empty lot. And then, as you're driving down First Street, they're headed towards the loop on your right, there's that lot, then some parking lots, then some administrative buildings. So, you can actually make it almost halfway through the Temple College campus without realizing I'm on the Temple College campus. And so, we want to have that focal point on the north end of campus, both to enhance our visual arts programs, which I'll touch on in just a moment, but also to provide that north-end welcome. There'll also be a reception desk and welcome center there, so that, you know, if that's the point at which you enter Temple College, we can make sure that you're directed to the right location to get the services that are needed. Directly to the west of that empty lot is our existing Visual Arts Center. And so, this, this used to be a western wear store, if you were familiar with it. Also, a piece of trivia, was a pet store sometime before that. And so, it was never a Visual Arts Center before it came to Temple College. So, it is not the type of space that is ideal for those instructional programs or for, really, to grow and give our students the ideal opportunities. I will say, Visual Arts faculty are incredibly creative people, and so they have done a great job with what they've been given. What you see there on the left side is the outdoor area where our kiln fires and items for our pottery are done. So, they've made it work, you know, inside of the western wear store here, or Visual Arts Center. You can see we have a very tight gallery. That was a picture from one of our spring art shows. And so, there's not the adequate space in there, but our programs are very popular. So, they do everything they can to make them fit. So, this is some conceptual renderings of what we'd like, you know, an open, beautiful art gallery for our students to display the work that they're doing, collaborative workspaces for them to work together on projects or whatever art they are designing at the time. We are also offering new degrees. We are offering a new associate's degree in studio arts, so growing that program. And then, we've also partnered with Texas A&amp;M Central Texas to offer a bachelor's degree in visual arts as well on the Temple campus. And so, big kind of growth issues, that's not the right word, but good problems to have, exciting things happening in our visual arts program. So, we're excited to have this project as part of the bond package. The next one, I'd like to joke that nobody is quite as excited about this one as me, since this is, I'm our Vice President of Administrative Services. And a campus service center hosts a lot of our backend operations. What is exciting about this to most people is not where the campus service center will be, but where it will no longer be. So, what is there shown on the, and the red dot is the existing campus service center. And so, our campus service center is, you can imagine, is a maintenance facility. So, there are, there's trucks, equipment, golf carts, things going in and out of there all day long as our team responds to issues around campus. And so, it's not a great front-door facility. It's also quite a dated facility. It's one of our oldest buildings on campus there as well. And so, the goal is to create a new campus service center that'll be out of the main foot traffic or even vehicle traffic for our students and for our visitors to campus, and create a well-designed maintenance facility, will also house our police department, our IT infrastructure, and our purchasing and mailroom. And so, all well-needed on campus, and so excited about this project. What these projects will also do, sort of indirectly, is address things such as lighting and pedestrian walkways to create a safer, more pedestrian-friendly campus. Shown there in the middle is existing, it's a parking lot. It's our quad parking lot, but we would like to convert that into a quad-quad with a nice green space, so that students that will be exiting the new Temple College Main Building to go over to the Performing Arts Center or the Newton Science Building will be traversing across a nice, open green space, as opposed to going through a parking lot. And so, these, really want to address that, and then lighting and other safety considerations. And this is really all geared towards preparing our students for 21st century careers. The college currently has a tax rate of 18.37 cents per $100 of assessed value. This bond, as it's been modeled, will step up into a total proposed tax rate increase of just under 5.5 cents. We do plan to issue in two different series, and so that will not be all at once, but we do show that that is the total proposed tax rate that's modeled. What that means for homeowners in our, in the Temple College District, which encompasses the city of Temple, as well as the areas of TISD that are not within the city of Temple, is $3.63 per month for each $100,000 of homestead appraised value. The average homestead in Temple, in our Temple College taxing district is just under $200,000. So, that means $6.14 a month, or $73.68 per year. Temple College has enacted a tax freeze, so homeowners who are over 65 and have applied for the tax freeze exemption on their property will not see an increase as a result of the bonds being issued. And again, we're training students here in Temple, Texas for a global economy. We were privileged to give this presentation to the Texas, sorry, the Temple Economic Development Corporation and learn a bit more about what they have going on. And there is so much growth from an economic standpoint. The land is available, the infrastructure here. One of their great shortfalls is the workforce and having the highly skilled workforce that these companies who are bringing, you know, 100, 200, 500 jobs into our communities are looking for. And so, this is a step towards addressing that need and a big step towards addressing that. Temple College has always been committed to providing an affordable education. You know, our tuition is about a third of a public university in the state of Texas. And so, we want, we will continue in that, in that mission to give those educational opportunities to everyone in our communities. And again, we, our goal is to, our A goal is to create that skilled workforce and bring those millions of dollars of economic impact into our communities, attract those businesses to locate here, and create jobs, create a larger tax base that we will all enjoy and be able to lower taxes for our residents. Okay, so we have now passed the last day to register to vote, but we did start today early voting. And so, if you live within the Temple College taxing district, which again, city of Temple or, well, certainly no one here would dare live in TISD, but city of Temple, you may vote at either City Hall or at our One College Center on campus. That will run all of this week, and then Monday and Tuesday of next week. Election Day is Saturday, May 1st, and we have four locations across the district that are available. Folks can vote at any of the locations, and we certainly appreciate the district allowing us to use Thornton-Tarver Elementary for one of our locations. So, and just to quickly recap, this is the map with all of the projects shown there, creating those north and south entry points and expanding those vital programs within health professions. And this is our, again, this is a rendering of what that expanded Health Science Center might look like, kind of tucked on there in the front. I'm not sure if we, okay, the video didn't come through, but that's okay. It's been, it's been a pretty good meeting run already. So, I won't share the video, but we will certainly email it out to Dr. Smith, and if he could share it with us. So, thank you all very much. If you have any questions, I'm very happy to address them tonight. But if you think of any, we have a bond website that goes deeper into each one of the projects. You could also email bond2021@templejc.edu or email myself or our president. We'd be happy to answer anything.
Thank you, Brandon, for that update. It sounds like some exciting things are happening over at Temple College. You know, anytime you're growing, you have to plan for it, and it sounds like you all have a great plan. Board, do you all have any questions or comments? Mr. Taggart.
Really good job on the comprehensive plan. I think you all are doing a good job with that. It was impressive, when I was reading through this, how long it's been and how little you all went to the public and asked for in 50 years. So, that's a commendation to the university. But the only thing I saw missing on here was there's no money for bringing the golf course back. I really missed the golf course. That's where I started my non-ilustrious golf career on the TJC golf course years ago. So, but I know you all will expand out there at some point.
Yeah, we, yeah, that, we will likely not be bringing back the golf course.
I see that.
Actually, in our master plan, not part of this bond, but that will be hopefully space for our athletic facilities to expand in that direction. But we do have a Temple College Foundation golf tournament that you should definitely play in.
Well, y'all are doing a great job, and I'm rooting for you guys in this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Flor.
Temple College is such a great resource for us here locally. You know, I'm relatively new to the area in the grand scheme of things, right? But it's been a great partner for me and my corporate life outside of here from a workforce development standpoint, helping us get off the ground. It's been a great partner from a BISD standpoint when it comes to dual enrollment and, you know, folks, kids that have the opportunity to graduate with associate's degrees. And so, to see some of the stuff that you're doing, to really expand out the opportunity to provide some of those programs, I mean, like Ty said, I mean, it sounds like some, and as McDonald said, you know, it sounds like some great planning is going on. There's a lot of excitement. So, thank you so much for everything that you do, you know, not just for us here at BISD, but for the community in general.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do you have anything else, sir?
Yeah, I just want to say what a proud partner we are with Temple College. It's, imagine, we've talked about pathways of success for each and every one of our kids. Imagine pre-K through 12, but imagine that being pre-K through 20 in our local area, and being able to say, we have those opportunities, those programs, that are going to lead to those amazing careers for our kids. And we know Temple College is working on building on their strong foundation to create those careers for the future for us, too. So, we're super excited about their partnership and thank them for being here tonight.
Thanks again.
Thank you all.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is update by city of Temple.
And our city manager from the city of Temple, Bryn Myers, is here tonight, and she's going to give us an update on all the happenings in the city.
Hello, Ms. Bryn.
Hi, thank you guys for having me today. I'm really excited. I feel like I haven't been here in a long time. So, thank you for the invitation and the opportunity to give you a little bit of an update on what's going on with the city of Temple. So, I was encouraged to see you all adopt your values and belief statement, and I know that you all have been working really hard on your strategic planning and your journey of a graduate plan. We at the city have also been up to strategic planning and business planning. And so, we actually really got started probably about a year and a half, almost two years ago, where it was time for us to take a hard look at our strategic plan. We had not updated our existing strategic plan since 2008, so it was dated, and it needed a fresh look. And we set out to do that, and we comprehensively went to the ground and started to build that back up for our needs today and make sure that we were planning and prepared to provide the, meet the growth and provide the services that our, that our community expects. So, we, we call our plan a business plan, and it has really four main elements. It has our strategic plan, which is the base of that plan, but it's also a fiscally constrained plan. So, we have a financial plan, and it's a total of an eight-year financial plan that allows us to identify the specific resources that we're going to use to implement the goals that have been set out in the strategic plan. We, of course, have our annual budget, just as you all do, where we adopt and officially appropriate the funding for the upcoming fiscal year. And then, we also have a comprehensive capital plan, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go along. So, our annual plan and our annual budget and our annual work plan is a one-year plan, but we wrap that around with an additional seven years of planning financially and capital work that makes up the base of our, of our total eight-year plan. So, as I mentioned, the strategic plan is really the foundation of our business planning. That's where we set out the vision and the mission for our organization, as well as our values and our focus areas. So, our vision is that Temple be a place that you love to call home. We feel like, though that is a very short and simple statement, we feel like it's very powerful and very inclusive. We care about you wanting to call Temple home to live and raise your family, but we also want to be a place where businesses want to call home and invest and grow their jobs and capital investment in our community. Our mission statement is to provide exceptional service without exception. I tell my team a lot that the reason that the city of Temple exists is to provide services to our community. That's what we're here for. That's what, that's what we do. So, our mission is also a simple, just very short sentence, but we feel like it really captures what we exist to do, which is to provide service to our community. We've identified through a process of both employee input and our city council's input, five organizational values, which are the lens in which we do what we do, and that's commitment, innovation, integrity, accountability, and collaboration. And then, the city council has also set four focus areas for us, to be a high-performing organization, to have beautiful places and spaces, to focus on strong public safety, and to have smart growth, plan for smart growth in our community. So, I want to just talk, we have nine goals that... growth in our community. So I want to just talk, we have nine goals that, that work to achieve those four focus areas. And you can see those on the screen there. I want to just talk a little bit today, just very briefly, about some of the programs and initiatives that we're working on right now this year in each of those focus areas. So I'll start with places and spaces. This program is really near and dear to my heart. I'm really passionate about it. This is a neighborhood planning program that we set out to do, where we've, we've taken really more of our older neighborhoods, the kind of the core of our community. We've separated these out into 18 distinct neighborhoods, and we are setting out to make a neighborhood, an individual neighborhood strategic plan for each of these areas. We believe that neighborhood planning isn't a one-size-fits-all approach. What, what is needed in, for example, the historic district is very different than the needs that exist in some of our East Temple neighborhoods, very different from some of the needs in, like the T-Med area around the hospitals. So we really want to approach it from planning for that specific neighborhood and planning with the neighbors, not for them, but with them. So bringing a lot of community engagement and understanding what the desires and the needs are of the people who live and work and engage in those neighborhoods. So we're setting out to do one of those each quarter. It's been, it's been a great opportunity so far. We have completed about six plans, and we're underway with our downtown plan at this moment. So we're making great progress there. I just have a few quick slides that kind of show you some of the examples. Like this is, this is one of our plans in an East Temple neighborhood where lots of housing reinvestment is desired. This also shows an East Temple neighborhood that has some big open green fields where new, new neighborhood or neighborhood service type investment could be considered. This is on the edge of our historic district, so maybe reusing some of the historic homes that are along the busier corridors as some neighborhood service, maybe some office or retail type experiences. So we're really excited about that program. We're also setting out to develop a strategy on mental health and homelessness. We're working, we envision this to be a countywide initiative. This is something that doesn't stop at city limit lines. And so we're really working with our partners in Colleen and Bell County to develop this plan. Our goal here is to identify where, what resources and what facilities we have available, what we need to have in order to achieve our goals, and a strategy to, to bridge the gap. So where there, make sure that we're not duplicating resources, but identify where we may be lacking resources and connect and put in strategies in place to, to try to fill those needs. And the term of smart growth, I know you guys know a lot about this as you've dealt with facility needs and planning in BISD. Currently, we have $266 million in capital projects underway as we speak. Those range from reinvestment zone projects to mobility or transportation work, utility work, and parks, drainage, and other types of facilities. When you total up the remaining eight years or seven years of our, of our business plan, we have another $560 million of capital projects in our plan and funded as part of our capital outlook. So a lot of that is in utility work and mobility. We're actually, Dr. Smith and I are meeting actually this week to talk about growth and roads and, and capital needs so that we're supporting each other well in that. So we do have, we are busy with capital work, and we want to make sure that we're being a good partner to the district as, as we know you're growing and want to make sure we have the infrastructure in place to help support that growth. So some of the examples of transportation projects that will be under construction this year include an expansion of Canyon Creek or Blackland. That's really in support of our partnership with the other school district, Temple ISD. But you can see Poison Oak finally on the list. So we are, we have acquired the right-of-way that's needed. Our council actually awarded last week demolition contracts for taking down the remaining structures that are, that are needed for the road expansion work there. If you've driven out that way, if you've, if you've gone to the elementary school out there recently, you'll probably also notice some tree lines being cleared. So we are nearing the point where we can put a shovel in the ground and get that project underway. So we're very excited to see that project come to fruition. And I think the meeting that Dr. Smith and I are having this week will help us prevent that kinds of, we've committed to collaboration and help us to prevent that kind of disconnect in the future. So we're very excited to get that project started and, and get ahead of the curve as well to, to plan for additional future needs. You'll see Cagli Road under construction in the coming weeks, as well as Outer Loop West Phase 1, which is the portion where the current improvements leave off to just past Poison Oak Road. So those projects will be underway in a similar timeframe. We'll also be reconstructing North P Ridge, Phase 1 and 2. I don't have Phase 2 on the screen, but we will be moving forward with Phase 1 and 2. So that will get us to Airport Road. We'll also be reconstructing South P Ridge, Azalea Drive, and working on Avenue D. So lots of mobility work in the next year. We're also currently right now underway with the city's first ever Mobility Master Plan. So we will be, we had our first stakeholder meeting on this topic last week, and we will be working closely with Dr. Smith and team to make sure that we incorporate your feedback and your comments. But this will give us an overall plan to help us address mobility needs in our community in the future so that we are planning ahead and, and making sure that we're, we're balancing and meeting the needs of our growing community. And on the utility side, we have just under $280 million in projects that will be coming up through the next few years. One of the most exciting ones for me is an expansion to our water treatment plant. This project broke ground two weeks ago, so we're just fresh, freshly started. This is a really important project for our community. This will expand our, this will add an additional membrane treatment plant to our plant fleet and will allow us to treat an additional 11, almost 12 million gallons a day of treatment, of water treatment capacity. So that will serve us very well as we continue to see great growth here in our community and our region. That project is, as I mentioned, just broke ground, and so it will be up and, we expect it to be up and running by next summer. So that's very exciting work. In the public safety focus area, we do have a public safety bond or capital improvement program that we're planning at this point to expand our training facilities for our police officers and firefighters. Right now, our police officers train in a facility that's over 40 years old. It has, it's essentially an earthen berm on three sides, no technology, no, no really investment in, in that facility to speak of in, in over 40 years. So this would allow us to build a state-of-the-art training facility because we want to make sure that our officers are, are getting the training and, and well-equipped to meet the needs of our community and to provide the services that, that we call on them to provide. This would also include some additional training capacity for our fire department, a driving range to help our, really all of our, our city drivers have the opportunity to train. Fun fact, we, as you know, probably, we provide solid waste collection services for our community. And if you would take all of the miles that our solid waste trucks drive in a year and line them up, they would drive to the moon and back twice. So we do a lot of driving. So having the opportunity to have a training facility to make sure that those, those drivers are being safe and keeping our community safe is very important. We're also planning an expansion to our animal shelter, which will be a part of this CIP program as well. We are very focused on our neighborhood and community policing program. As you, hopefully, you've had a chance to meet our new police chief, Sean Reynolds. He is a wonderful advocate for community policing and building relationships between our police department and our community, which are absolutely critical to effective policing and are strained today. So we're really looking to invest heavily into community-oriented policing and really make that something that every officer within, within our organization is focused on, in addition to having a specific, a specific division dedicated to that effort as well. We added a school resource officer this year. So this is a little bit of old news for you all, but Lake Belton High School, of course, opened up this year. So in our partnership and support of that high school facility, we have brought on an additional officer to serve there at the high school. And so we added that position to our department this past year, and he's on board. And then finally, in our high-performing organization focus area, the city council has recently done a complete overhaul of our boards and commissions. And I'm really proud and want to share a few examples of some of the new commissions and boards that they've established. One goes right in line with what we've just talked about in terms of community policing. The council has allowed us to create a citizens' police advisory commission, and that commission will help study policing issues, help us understand what types of best practices that we can bring to our community, and really focus on channels of communication between our citizens and our police department. We've also established a diversity, equity, and inclusion commission, and really an entire DEI program. We've added staff to our, to our team to help us lead and implement the strategies that come out of this work. We actually just had a luncheon today to welcome our new equity manager to the community, Bria Gambrell, just started last Monday. So we're excited to have her lead the program. The commission was just appointed by council last month. So this is a new program for us, and we're very excited to get that program started and, and off the ground. And then this is near and dear to my heart, and I'm excited to talk to you guys about it because I feel like we'll have a great partnership here as well. So one of the other new boards that the city council approved was a youth advisory commission. When I was in high school, I was a member of a youth advisory commission, and it really formed my love of local government. And it is probably the primary reason why I'm here today speaking with you, because at an early age, I was able to understand the impact that local government makes on our lives and how important it is for people to serve and choose public service as a, as a potential path, whether it's like you all through volunteer service or for me or Dr. Smith through the professions that, that we chose. So it also allows young people to understand how accessible local government is to, to them and how they can make change and be a part of something bigger than themselves. So I'm very excited to have the youth advisory commission established. We are going to wait to appoint this new board until September so we can get, kind of get into the new school year and, and get more, the word out more. So we'll be working closely with Dr. Smith and ways that we can partner to, to try to get young people aware of the opportunity and wanting to be involved. But that is, that is a near and dear to my heart. So I'm very excited to see that program come forward. So that was the brief. I know you've already had a, a long meeting today, and I appreciate the time and the opportunity to update you all. If you have any questions on these topics or others, I would be happy to answer them. And you can also send them my way. Dr. Smith can connect me with it if you think of something later. So, again, thank you for the partnership we've had. I think we've enjoyed a, a great partnership. And Dr. Smith and I meet every other month or so to just catch, catch up and check in and make sure we're, we're serving each other. So I know that, that commitment continues, and I appreciate that very much. I think it, it makes us better when we are serving the same, we, we have the same citizens and so, that we serve. And so I, I feel grateful for Dr. Smith and his leadership and your support as board members.
Well, we appreciate you. I'm going to just echo exactly what you just said. We appreciate the partnership. We appreciate the update. Lots of good things happening in Temple and appreciate you sharing that with us tonight.
Sure.
Board, do you all have any comments or questions? If you do, Mr. Taggart?
I just want to say thank you. When I saw this on the agenda, I thought it was long overdue for you guys to be here with us because we do have such an, you know, integrated now relationship. I mean, we've got a high school over there.
Yes.
So those of us who grew up in Belton and graduated here, we would have never dreamed that this relationship would have ever even happened. We've never really gotten along on the football field, but
Right.
We have a really good and growing relationship with the City of Temple. And it's so vital because so much of our growth is in West Temple. And I know when we decided to build Charter, my wife teaches there. I know that was a big decision for y'all because you had to bump up that Poison Oak project. You put it ahead of Cagli maybe and some of the others. And we appreciate that. I know it's been a long, a long road to hoe because of the property acquisitions and things like that. But I was just out there a couple days ago and seeing the trees coming down, the stakes are going up, and
It's happening, finally.
It really is. So that's, that's a signal to us, the commitment that the City of Temple has now to BISD. And I appreciate that relationship and Matt bringing you, you know, y'all coming in and y'all's, you know, talks and stuff like that. So it's from an old-school Belton person, it's, it's awesome to see us coming together because we do share so many of our students now in Temple, Texas
Right.
That are part of BISD. So it's awesome that we're getting along and everything's moving forward. And we really appreciate y'all's efforts in this.
Thank you, yeah. And I think that, you know, as I mentioned, Dr. Smith and I are meeting regularly, meeting intentionally to talk about development and, and transportation needs. So we can, we can be ahead of, you know, we can time our projects better so that, you know, when y'all are building a school, if there's transportation needs, we're alongside you and not behind you. So we appreciate that partnership.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Flor?
Yeah, for the record, I think Ty technically calls it North Belton ISD instead of West Temple, but whatever. No, I mean, I think, you know, Temple, Texas, and the surrounding areas, right, popped up on like some of the best places to live, right, list in the last several years, right? And there's, and that's not an accident, right? And like with, with you look at us being a fast-paced school district, and you look at the population growth in this area, it's, it's not unreasonable to think in our lifetime, like this area's going to kind of look like the outskirts of Houston, right, does to downtown Houston. Like, we're going to look, we're going to look like that to Austin. And, you know, I think the really intentional growth and planning that's going on, you know, with the City of Temple, with, with Belton ISD, with the City of Belton, I mean, that is so critical for us to, to get there and to get it right. And so, so appreciated to see the, just the changes that have occurred, you know, whether it's Parks and Rec, right, and the amazing opportunities that have come out into West Temple, that I think we're leveraging even from a school system standpoint as auxiliary facilities. You know, the redevelopment that's going on downtown, the, the school resource officer's been amazing. I spent a lot of time out, out there, and, and he's been great. So I think, like this partnership, I think he started by saying, we don't do this enough. We don't do this enough. I think we agree. You know, it can't be, I don't think it can even be once a year. I think we got to do it more frequently than that because I think our success is going to be so tied together. So thank you for, for being here and everything that you do.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd be happy to come back when, when the time is right.
I think the only thing we need to work on is with the economic development people to get like another Tesla to come into the BISD part of Temple, Texas, and put a big plant over here somewhere.
Yeah.
That would really be exciting to see.
I'll also put a plug in for a Bronco logo on the water tower that's right up by the high school.
I knew I wasn't going to get out of here without that one.
I, it was on the tip of my tongue to say, but I thought, no, no, Chris will say it. All righty. Anything else, Board? Dr. Smith?
I just want to thank Bryn. So since I came in the district, Bryn has reached out on a consistent basis. We get together, as she said, on a consistent basis. I think I told you all before, one of my best friends is a city manager outside of Chicago. And I was just bragging about Bryn to him not too long ago. I really believe with Bryn and with Sam Listy and with, we have a new city manager in Morgan's Point. We have great partnerships with our cities that just can only continue to get better. And really excited about what the future holds for BISD and partnerships with the cities. So Bryn, thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate you all.
Thank you. So we have a variety of things listed next, but we're going to move things around a little bit. And the board is actually going to go into closed session. I'll let Dr. Smith talk about the why, and then I'll come back and tell you about the what.
One of our items on closed session has guests visiting us in closed session tonight. And so we'd like to move our closed session up and adjourn the closed session at this time and then go from there. So if y'all would humor me just for a little bit, we'll move the agenda around and take care of that.
Okay, so the board will stop this portion of the meeting, and we will go into closed session to discuss personnel and deliberations about real property. We will return and continue our agenda as Bryn, afterwards. We will return and continue our agenda afterwards. So Board, we're going to meet next door in the learning lounge, so we'll go ahead and close out in this meeting at this moment. Thank you.
And what our parents and community want from us regarding virtual learning. And so Gabby's going to tell you a little bit more about that.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak to you this evening about our exploration of virtual school options for the future and 21, '22 school year. The purpose of this presentation is just that, to provide you an update on the work that we're doing in that exploration. Let me talk to you just a bit about the why of this work. We believe in providing exceptional learning experiences for each and every child. And while COVID and the pandemic thrust us into virtual learning, what we've learned is that now there's still 2,000 students who are still choosing a virtual learning option. And so if we're truly about continued improvement and responding to those needs, we feel it's important for us to ask the question, why? And what is it that your child needs or student that you need to be best prepared for the future? And so we have committed to exploring the possibilities of virtual learning in the '21, '22 school year with full recognition based on feedback from our teachers, our families, and our students, that we've got to make changes and we've got to move, make improvement as well, so that both students and teachers can thrive in that environment. So we have taken an action plan approach to this work, really being driven by question and problem solving. And so we've time lined the key work out. The first phase of our work was really about getting in the know. What is our challenge that's in front of us? What have we learned this year? What's the challenge of the future? And really doing some research on models around the country and within our state where we see significant student success and what we can learn from those models versus what we are working through right now. What I can tell you in that research is that we're learning that the most effective programs or models really embrace community and connections to school. And so they have developed models that include both virtual, primarily virtual learning with enhancement of in-person opportunities. So students might come in for lab experiences, community experiences, service experiences, getting social and emotional needs met, but there's that connection back to the home community. The phase that we're in right now is truly assessing the needs by listening and engaging our community about their interest for the future, why or why not they're interested, and how we can improve the options that are available to them. You have probably seen a social media post or an option coming home to your student asking about your interest for the future. And so that opened last week and will close tomorrow. And we started another final push today to try to get as much information back as we can. We are also with the team that we formed, really developing potential models based on the level, elementary, middle, or high school that we're working on. How we're doing it, I just shared and you've seen that we launched the community survey. There's key information that we want. We want to know about interest in the virtual school, why you are interested in it, what were the positive experiences that students had this year, and what were specific areas for improvement. I can tell you, as I entered this meeting today, there were 836 responses to that survey, and they just keep coming in. We have approximately 70 people who have taken the survey who are expressing that they are not interested, and then 30% who are. And so that data alone tells us that it's just not right for everyone, but there is a number of students who are still preferring this.
Gabby, just clarification on that. You said 70 people, 70% of the people are not interested, but 30% are?
Yes.
And what was your response, number of responses so far?
Eight hundred and thirty-six.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so that's a large number of students that are still interested. And we're looking for themes in the data about the reasons why or why not individuals are interested. And some themes that have begun to emerge for us are the flexibility in the model and the alignment of the model to student learning needs. We're also finding the feedback that there's some need for improvement in communication. There are complications in the system when students had to navigate multiple management systems, developing understanding of the attendance and grading practices, and of course, wanting a desired focus on one environment for our staff and families as well. You can see in the data that there was a clear transition when we started having students come back. And there's the feel of tug between teachers having to split their time between virtual and in-person. And so we really want to make sure that we are planning for the future and developing the environment that allows both to thrive, like we said before. We're tracking data on special programs that students may participate in and their extracurricular activities and the impact of those on decisions that we're making about the school design. And then the other piece of information that I think that you need to continue to be aware of is that we're tracking legislation. We have direct contacts who are deeply involved in tracking bills. There's two primary bills that seem to be getting the most traction. And the first one would ask our legislators to form a committee to assess the current state of virtual learning in the state of Texas and come back to the legislature with an update on their findings. The second bill would allow for school districts to design virtual learning courses without having to be a part of the virtual school network and to continue to receive ADA funding for those. That bill is specifically referencing grades three through 12. And it has moved out of the committees and is actually on the floor now. So again, these are the ones that have seemed to gain most traction, and they're kind of running simultaneously. So if school districts are given the option of developing their own courses for ADA funding, that this commission would simultaneously be assessing the effectiveness. The legislative session ends on May 31st, and I team up with Elizabeth to get educated. We also know that they could extend that timeframe, but we are watching the bills closely, and that's when the legislative session should end. So that was an extremely high-level overview, and there's tons of information to share with you all. What questions might I answer for you?
Flor, do I have any questions? Mr. Taggart?
I know this is just kind of the big broad view, and you've got a lot of steps still left to go. And I'm kind of lean, you know, trying to grasp this concept. I know we know that the pandemic's going to change a few things about how we do certain things in the world. I get it.
Yeah.
So this is thinking outside the box, very non-traditional. But I'd like there to be a pretty, be like an academy of sorts. I think I've heard that word. You need to qualify to get into this. It needs to be screened because I do think there are still examples of some that are at home that really need to be not at home. But I know there's some that are thriving. So is there going to be a pretty strict criteria? Kind of, at least in the beginning of the thought process of allowing people into this program?
Sure. So if we are truly committed to improvement, we'll be really reflecting on the challenges that we faced last year. And one of the, or this school year, one of the biggest challenges is flexibility that, I should re-change that, the mobility between settings. So students who are going back and forth between settings has really put significant challenges on staff. Attendance and engagement has been put in place. So when I'm hearing your question, one of the things that we have to be challenged by is to really provide clarity. Clarity about what the offerings will be in the virtual school, what the expectations for attendance and engagement are, and just make those very, very clear upfront and commitment. This would not be an in-and-out. You would be choosing this as a learning environment for you. So providing that clarity around expectations, we really feel would be supportive of what you're describing.
Yeah, if I may just elaborate on it, we don't want to redo this year, and I want to be super clear about that. We have said all along that we want more people back face-to-face, and we will continue to say that. We believe we do our best work face-to-face. But this has changed the learning trajectory for some students. And virtual learning outside of Texas has been taking off. Texas has some pretty tight rules regarding secondary education in particular with virtual learning. Other states have not. So virtual learning has been taking off in other parts of the country at a different pace than in Texas in the past. We want to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our community. So I did quick math, 836 respondents so far, 30%, about 30% interested. That's 200 and about 60 people that are still interested. We don't want to lose 260 kids. We also already know that we have, I believe it's 2018, '19 school year, over 80 students that had left us to go to a charter school nearby. So we want to continuously study and make sure we're meeting the needs of the BISD community. And that's what this is allowing us to do. We don't know if we're going to be able to offer a virtual academy, virtual school, virtual whatever we want to call it. But we feel it's in our due diligence to our community to explore it.
I mean, at this point, we, unless there's some legislative changes, we still can't anyway, right? Just to be clear, right? We're just trying to lay the groundwork to be ready in the event that that were to come about. And I think I've said this before, like if we're going to do it, if we, if, that's a big if, right? If we're going to do it, it's going to be world-class, right? Like there's no, yeah.
Mr. Flor, to that point, the, we've been really working this year on agility, right? And being prepared so that situations that come don't control us, that we have management of that, right? And so we're really using this time to learn and design multiple options that we could look and say, what is world-class for our students? What is aligned to the needs of our students and our community? One of the things that Mr. Dr. Smith just mentioned was the 267 students that are in Belton ISD and not in our system right now because they're choosing homeschool, private school, or charter schools. We've been looking at that data for the last few years. And by listening to what's happened in our own system this year and considering that, we realize that we can do better for our kids and we can connect with students who we may have lost that we believe in serving in Belton ISD in our community. So we've been studying the schools around us, the charter schools, private schools, to understand what they're doing that might be drawing students there as well. And then honestly, designing world-class that's top-notch and brings them back because they recognize the needs will be better met in Belton ISD.
Awesome. You have any questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that update.
Thank you all. Please reach out with any questions or curiosities that you have, as you're thinking.
Next item, strategy. Next item, strategic plan update.
Dr. Golden's going to come give us an abbreviated report on our strategic planning process.
Good evening. So yes, here to provide a quick update on our work regarding developing a strategic plan. As you know, this is tied directly to Goal Five in our key progress measure. We mentioned that key progress measure earlier this evening. Big picture of how this fits with all of our work, we've spent a lot of time talking about directional work. So things like establishing goals this summer, key progress measures in August, the values and beliefs that you just adopted, developing the journey of a graduate and adopting that. The other, I think, recent workshop asked you about your input into vision. We showed a quick video by Michael Jr. and really talked about how knowing our why, and when we know our why, our what becomes more impactful. So I got input from you, and I'm going to show you a couple of sample vision statements in a few minutes, based on your input and the input of others. All of that has been about setting direction. During this time, we've also been doing assessments of our facilities, as you heard earlier this evening, just to figure out, in some areas, current reality. So directional system, direction for our district, and then assessing current needs. And now we're in the phase of developing a roadmap to bringing all of this to life. And so our, we've developed a strategic steering team that's been working, and we are about to launch our planning team. So this is just a timeline. I showed you this earlier in a previous presentation. We hope to be seeing you in June with our strategic plan. But big picture on process, the steering team has really been guiding this process. They designed the community summit. We had several of those, as well as a thought exchange to gather input from our community. Those took place, and now the focus area planning teams are getting ready to launch this week. Big picture, when all of that data from thought exchange and all of those community summits, studying all of that data, these are the focus areas that really emerged from all of that data, which should look really familiar, because they really align with the goals that you've developed. So we have teams forming around each of these focus areas, and part of that process was we took your input. When we talked vision recently, we took it back to that steering team. We gathered feedback on a couple of drafts that they crafted based on your input, as well as gathering some input from principals and DEWIC, our DEWIC committee. And so this evening, not asking you to pick one or the other of these two statements, but these are two that after taking it to all of these groups based on your input, these were the two that were drafted and resonated most with the groups we were working with. So you'll see a draft, so that first one, provide a foundation that leads to an unlimited future for each and every student, and the part below it is the tagline that they developed along with that. Second draft, empower each and every learner to pursue their dreams and enrich their communities. Tagline on that, pursuing dreams, creating futures. So again, not asking you to vote on these, but would like to gather some feedback from you this evening. Are there parts of these statements that really speak to you, really resonate with you? Is anything missing? Because our goal is to bring back to you when we bring the strategic plan, would be the final draft of a vision statement, because it is the charge of our board to set vision for the school district. And so want to bring the final one back to you in June.
I particularly like the word empower in draft two. I believe when you empower someone, you give them the, just the opportunity to see that there are, there's no limit, that they can do anything regardless of their socioeconomic status, or whatever they may have going on at home. And then the pursuing dreams and creating futures, you know, every little boy and girl has a dream to do something wonderful. They may not know, necessarily know at the time what it is, and so I believe if we can empower them with the ability to dream, that we can definitely get to draft two quite easily.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'll punt it to the board. Y'all have any other comments?
What she said.
Ditto.
All righty then, thank you.
Okay. If you have other comments, please let me know. Next steps, again, our focus planning teams start this week. They will share their feedback, and basically their work will be around identifying strategies for improving and moving forward in those focus areas. That work will go to the steering team for some feedback. They'll go back and do a little bit more work, and then it will hopefully roll into that strategic plan that we'll present to you in June.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Looks like we have the training requirements up here. We had some reports that were listed before, but I'll go ahead and speak to this since it's showed here on the screen. What this simply means is that the board has to continually learn, and there's some requirements that we are, that we are faced with every year, and I am happy to report that we have met and/or exceeded those. In the case of Ms. Erin Bass, who just got appointed in January, she still has some opportunities to complete those requirements. But, Flor, again, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you do. Thank you for being a continual learner, and I know that each of us has individual things that we have to accomplish when it comes to these learning things, and some of us are doing it virtually, some of us have done it in person, but we've done it. So thank you for the work that you do for this community as a whole and individually. And so that will take us to the next item, which was the facilities committee report.
My facilities committee report was the workshop tonight.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, then we'll move on to policy.
All right. With the exception of one policy that we discussed in our last meeting, all the policies are on the consent agenda. Under subsection M, there are six of them, and these are going to suffice as our second reading pursuant to a policy. The changes that were made to these six policies are actually quite small. One of them was like, the investment was for commercial paper went from 180, 180 days to 270. So albeit the changes were very small, they could be quite impactful, so just keep that in mind. One of the things that I want to mention, and Ty had made a comment to me last week, when I talk about these policies, we always say, well, CDA local, DEA local, CPC local, but what does all that mean? One of the, one of the things that I want to emphasize tonight is that these local policies are a reflection, and we've talked a lot about vision tonight, talked about our beliefs and what we value. These local policies are, in fact, a reflection of what we believe and what we value as a district. So anytime you see local, although there's recommendations that are made, some of them have to have, they have to comply with the legal requirements, of course, but, but we are allowed to add in our local policies what we want to do to reflect what we would like to accomplish. For example, the CDA local that I just mentioned about the 180 to 270, the DEA local, when you see a D, it's, you see a policy begins with a D, generally talking about personnel. And that was a local compensation plan. That begins on page 232 of your packets. We had to address this early on in the year, well, actually last March, whenever we had the emergency closure and how we're going to pay employees during the pandemic. We actually discussed this, I think, on two meetings, and there was a very small change made to that about paying employees during, during emergency closure, whether that emergency closure is due to weather, whether it's due to some sort of state mandate, federal mandate, those kinds of things. One of the things I want to point out is that non-exempt employees that are required to work are going to be paid two times or paid up to 40 hours, and then two and a half times after 40 hours. Chris, is that correct? We had a lot of discussion about that. Yes, okay. So if employees want to know how they're going to get paid during emergency closure, of course, the board still has discretion, but that's something that we wanted to make very clear, we're going to take care of employees during, during an emergency closure. Moving on to CPC local, which is records management, if you look at our policy, that was kind of stuck on Matt. And as many records requests as we receive, you can't possibly keep up with all of that. So we added that you could, it could be you as the custodian of records, or you're designated, or it could be more than one designated, depending on the department. So that was a small change, big impact. BQ local and BQA local, and then BQB local. If you look at all three of those, those have to do with our district vision, our goals, objectives, and journey of a graduate. We've had a lot of discussions about journey of a graduate, and we would be remiss if we did not add journey of a graduate as an element to these policies. We talk about it a lot, so whenever we're considering the district vision, mission, mission and goals and objectives of what we want to accomplish with our students, we got to factor in the journey of a graduate and the competencies that go along with that. So we made some changes to those. Again, it was, they're very minor, but have a big impact. The last part of our discussion centered upon EIC local, and I know I've said this many times, and Deanna's back there. She brought, she brought us back some, some data and interviewed the class of, well, all of our graduating seniors, is that right? Right?
Correct.
So, and then Matt and I had a discussion about EIC local, and we're going to continue our discussions about EIC local. And one of the things that I want all of us to start to ponder and think about is, EIC local has to do with class rank, of course, and grading, and how we weigh our courses. Obviously, we're going to have, especially the top 10%, they're going to be focused on the, on the grades. Let me get, let me get as much, as much of a GPA, as high a GPA as I possibly can to get into a certain school. And one, although there's several things that Deanna and her team brought to us, based upon these interviews that they did, and we found that kids are avoiding taking certain classes because of the EIC local. And I'll just give you some of the classes that they're avoiding. They're not taking pre-AP calculus, because on-ramps is weighted higher. They're not taking debate, medical microbiology, anatomy, medical terminology, dual-credit courses, that was interesting, physiology. They're not taking the culinary arts, accounting two. And I'll mention something that Janet, Janet's not here tonight, but Janet mentioned that I think her, her boys, one of them, I think, went to business, the other one went to engineering, but she thought, well, you know, an engineering student should have some sort of maybe accounting background or some sort of business background, so then when they go out into the workforce, they'll have some, some knowledge of that. So she thought, she made it a point to say, well, my kids were focused on nothing but GPA, so they avoided those courses, and we thought that they should have those courses. Psychology, health sciences, introduction to business, and there's some others on the list also that the kids are avoiding. So, so I want to leave you with this tonight. If you look at that policy as a whole, have we lost, to some extent, the purpose of education? Because it appears that GPA is the driving force behind that. And one of the things that Melinda mentioned tonight in the strategic planning is, are we not allowing kids to explore what maybe they're interested in? Because maybe they're not, they're not going to know now, because they can't take certain courses, because they're so focused on GPA. So, so we want to have, we want, we want to have kids to have the ability to have a broad perspective of what they want to do, especially in high school. It should be a fun experience. Another thing that Deanna brought to us is that kids are spending several hours, three-plus hours a night, completing homework on a daily basis, and that was 15.5% of the kids reported that. That's a lot of time that they're spending doing homework. Two to three hours, 19%. One to two hours, 31%. So as we move further, one of the things that we had asked Deanna to do for us is to bring us back some data on, if you take the focus off GPA, how is that going to impact kids getting into college? And that's going to be one of our, our future discussions. So at some point later on, I mean, it can be many, I mean, this is, this is going to be a long process, we've said that many times. We're going to put all of this together, and then, and then we're going to address EIC local and decide whether we're going to make some significant changes to it or not. So we've got to be, start thinking about that now, because it's going to be an ongoing process. And Deanna and her team are doing a great job in bringing us information, you know, interviewing these kids, and obviously, the way we've done things from, from, for the last several months is we're going to engage the community and figure out, remember, it's a, it's a local policy, so it should be reflective of our, of our local beliefs and our desires that we want for our kids. And EIC's local is one of those that we can, I mean, we almost have full discretion to change it the way, however we want to change it.
Thank you, Manuel. Flor, do y'all have any comments or questions?
I mean, one of the most troubling, troubling things that I've come across, kind of, as we go, as we've looked at this, is we're chasing kids away from engineering. And, you know, if you look at the job market and to where the needs are in the skill sets, like, we're millions of people short in the country, like, filling those fields. And some of the stuff that we have in that policy is chasing kids away from taking those programs. Now, you could argue to get best set up to pursue those programs in college, like, as much math, as much math as you can take as possible, that, that's pretty much, that would help you get there, but they're not exploring the engineering scientist stuff because of this, right? And that, that's really troubling. So, you know, we got to, we got to figure out, yeah, more, much more to come. So, and the goal, right, is kick the door open as wide as we can for as many students for as long as we possibly can, and hold it open, right? We want to make sure that they've got options to, I don't know, if that second vision statement would be like that, right? So, yeah.
Mr. Taggart?
But I don't know the exact data on this, but I know Texas is kind of a relic when it comes to the GPA and class rank thing, right? So if we could get our big universities, the two big ones that a lot of the, those top-tier competitive kids are trying to get into, because they only take the seventh or six percent tiling up, when we can get our legislature to make a policy change for our state, then that should free up local districts to do what's best for their kids. But until we can get that figured out, it's going to be kind of tough, isn't it?
Yeah, well, so what we're learning too is there's, it's almost like two different ways kids are scored, right? So if you go from a, if you go to a, Dr. Love Smith, correct me if I go off the rails here, all right?
You're doing so good.
I got it. Right, so the school's a two different process, right? So if you go to, if you go to apply to a college from a school system that's a ranking school system, you go through one process. If you, if you go through the application process through, from a non-ranking school district, you go through a different process that looks at the student holistically. Well, I don't know. I mean, just with what I know today, and sort of, you know, some of the research and stuff we've done, I mean, that more holistic approach seems to be maybe a better approach. I, I don't know. We haven't done all the research, right? There's a lot to do still, but like, they're starting, that, that process is starting to change. So, and, and part of the input is actually college and university input, like admissions input. So we're certainly going to get a view of what that looks like.
Well, one way of doing it, we talked about, would be to weigh courses less, or not weigh as many courses, to allow kids to explore what they might want to do for the future. Because if you're a kid that's just focused on that, you're not going to, you're going to be focused on GPA, period. You may not, you may want to take other courses, but you can't. You may not know, you may not ever know what your interests are until you get into college and say, man, I really don't like this. I should have, I wish I would have been able to explore that in, in high school.
Any other comments or questions about that? Nope, we'll move on to the attendance report.
I am really excited about giving this report tonight. We're going to boil it down to four points real quickly, and I'm not even going to use the slides on this one. First, I want to publicly thank our board and our administrative team. As you all know, since I was virtual last month, I have a
since I was virtual last month, I have a family member who has been in and out of the hospital for over a month now, and I appreciate your support immensely. It's a challenge, and I just wanted to make sure I thank the board, but also our administrative team. They are amazing, and they're doing a ton of work right now, and I'm very proud of them and thankful for them. So I wanted to say that first and foremost. Secondly, as you see throughout the presentation tonight, there's a lot of teacher recognitions going on right now, and I think it'd be remiss if I didn't point out that despite the challenges that we've had this year, our teachers are doing phenomenal work. And I think it's important for us to remember that, and it's exciting to remember that when we talk about Teacher of the Year time. There are some amazing teachers in this school district, and I'm super proud of what I see when I go to visit classrooms. Third thing I want to make sure that I point out is Mr. Loma Lee's going to come up real briefly and talk to you real quickly, real quickly, about getting, about getting some feedback right now. As you all know, we've made some changes to the secondary schedules this year and be due to some changes because of COVID, and we are in the middle of studying that right now and talking about that. So Mr. Loma Lee, will you give us a quick update?
Yep. That's my update. Have a good evening. Well, very quickly, thank you, Board, and good evening. And just want to give you a quick, a couple of phases that we've gone through in terms of getting feedback. Our purpose has been to get comprehensive feedback around our secondary ballot schedule moving forward. And really, the, the how we get feedback is just, is critically important, even more important than, than the recommendation, just as important as the recommendation, that we're being very thoughtful about getting parent, student, and teacher feedback along the way. So Phase One was a thought exchange and kind of prepping for that and some focus group. Phase Two was holding the, the focus groups and the thought exchange. We've collected a variety of data sets. We took that data sets and actually analyzed it with students and staff in those focus groups, and then we took it to kind of Phase Three, where now we're taking all of that data, all of the, the wonderful information sharing that we had, and are analyzing it and creating some scenarios around it. Okay? So it's very well informed. I'm very proud of our principals that we slowed the process down in order to get incredibly valuable feedback to help inform our decision-making and our recommendations. At this point, we're running those scenarios by staff yet again, right, to get additional feedback. We're having conversation with central office leadership about a couple of scenarios, and that would be the everyday scenario and every other day scenario. We're vetting it through various feedback loops, athletics, fine arts, CTE, making sure that everybody's eyes are on various scenarios. We are not in a place right now to make a recommendation yet. We are okay living in dissecting the scenarios, right, and really making sure that we're well-informed and bringing forward a recommendation that everybody can be, be sure that, that voices were heard and part of the process. And so that is my quick report for you this evening, letting you that that process is going well, and that I'm very proud of our principals for leading the way and getting that feedback. Any questions?
Board, are there any updates, comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last piece I wanted to point out this evening is that, well, first of all, I should thank Mr. Loma Lee for leading that. We, we made some changes to that schedule. I have some strong opinions about using schedules to best meet the learning needs of our kids, but we've been put in a challenging situation this year, and I really appreciate Arturo's leadership in, in doing that. The last thing in the superintendent's report every month, we report out on any actions taken regarding the resolution from last year for COVID-19. Todd and Jennifer, are there anything to report? There are no items to report this month regarding that. So in the essence of a shortened superintendent's report, that is the concluding remark.
Well, thank you very much, sir. Any comments or questions about the superintendent's report? We're good? All right. Next item is on our agenda is the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to have any item pulled for the discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve as presented? Mr. Norwood, is there a second? Mr. Taggart, all in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. All righty. Our next item, a board request for new information. Anything on this side of the House? Y'all need anything? Chris, Erin? No? Anything on this side of the House? Nope. I would move on to the calendar of events. You all have a listing. I just want to call out a couple of things. Early voting started today. That's weekdays only. That's listed there. The Belton High School pre-prom is from 1:00 to 3:30 at Belton High School Gym this coming Friday, April 23rd. We have a couple of special board meetings that you all need to make sure your calendars are updated. One is going to be April 26 at 5:00, and the other one's going to be May 10th. The only other thing that I would want to point out here is our next regular board meeting will be on May 17th. Other than that, if there's nothing further, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for tonight's meeting.